Fifth, 2021. We'll stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Hope.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special recognitions or presentations tonight. That brings us down to delegations. We have one delegation, Todd Martin of Bridgeport. It was emailed in. One once, one twice? All right, move down to the superintendent's update.
I just have a few things for superintendent's update. Facilities always comes up first, Mr. Lopez, so I apologize for that. Did you want to update us on the Gore project?
Well, really, there hasn't been any significant change. They're working a lot on some of the wire molding and some things. They're trying to keep the drive-haul guys at the facility so they don't have to leave and come back. Other than that, there's really not anything significant that I think I can bring to the table. As far as transportation, we're making it like all of our service personnel right now. We're just trying to keep everything going from the doors of the school being open every morning to enough people in the seats of the bus drivers. We've been able to fill every route and, you know, God bless all those people that are working their hind ends off, and they're doing everything very unselfish. We recognize them last year, and they truly are working hard to try to keep things going. There could come a day that we have to not have enough cussing out on the road, just because we have a lot of illness. Every night when we go home, we know that everything's good, but that's before anybody calls off there's a, you know, a situation. So we've been fortunate to, other than that, that's why.
How is the new United States looking out over the building? Because I saw something on the internet and it looked like it just really is working.
Yeah. It really is going well. The maintenance department's done a lot to accommodate. I think we got all the technology integrated at this point, and they seem to be comfortable knowing that that's their place for the maintenance.
Yeah, they really worked hard to use the space that they have for all their programs. I think it's working as well as they could be working for, you know, for the building.
Well, the person you need to probably recognize for making it work is Ashley Satterfield. She really has just done whatever she's had to do, whether it was organization of what the possible were or, you know, getting her team together. But they're using the space that they have over there, and the last I talked to Ashley one-on-one, she's happy. You know what I'm saying? The staff has been happy, so.
And they've developed schedules to work in that building, and, I mean, they've had to redo everything.
Correct. I mean, once again, Ashley realized the challenge in front of her, she put it together, and as far as I know, it's working fine.
That's great.
Other than you need cooks?
I could use some cooks there. We're short on subs today, but we made it work, and I'm like, Mr. Lopez, today, right now, I think we're okay, but we don't know what's gonna happen tonight. So we're monitoring and watching and reacting as we can.
You just want to stop cooking yourself.
Correct.
We had Bobby Joe out today. She was at Robert C. Byrd.
I'm not sure if Bobby Joe Harvard stopped here. She might have been quickly to Robert C. Byrd and, once again, we had some other people that just stepped up. Counselor Jacob Hayhurst at United came and drove the van over from Robert C. Byrd to United States. So there was different people chipping in and helping out, and I'll give them accolades, and we appreciate it. And unfortunately, it's a challenge we have in front of us. I don't care what.
And we're open.
Yeah.
We're open, and menu items have been an issue. I see something about every day with.
Well, it's everywhere.
Yeah.
It's just like you, whether it's groceries or other products that you're trying to buy, sometimes there are shortages. Child nutrition across the country. We have products. It just may not always be what we want. And once again, Bobby Joe Harvard and Rebecca Oliverio are working hard with cafeteria managers on making sure substitutions are available. Today, we got word, Mrs. Satterfield doesn't even know this, but late this afternoon, a truck couldn't be delivered to some of our schools today. It's being pushed back tomorrow. Once again, they responded and were okay. What parents and students are gonna see is maybe menu changes without notice. Once again, that's because, once again, we're just reacting to what the market's allowing us to do, so.
Is there anything that either one of you think that we as a board can do to assist in helping?
You ever worked in the kitchen?
I haven't. I need to go work in the kitchen for a day.
We're all like that.
I mean, once again, I don't know if there's something directly. Obviously, we have some things in the works, such as we are trying to hire more substitute cooks. There's a process to that, though, so it doesn't happen instantly, doesn't happen overnight, but it's in the process. I sarcastically, but at the same time, sincerely said to Bobby Joe, should we start working on even more subs?
He's right.
That's where we're at. So once again, we are plotting and planning, trying to stay ahead of the game the best we can.
And really, in working with Tammy and also David, the superintendent, you know, we're really trying to work on recruiting and trying to retain some more substitute employees. The turnaround is much quicker for them to be able to get a full-time position. We're hoping that.
And that's what I was gonna say. There's ebbs and flows, and everyone knows for years, everyone talked about, man, I'd like to have a job with the school board. But it was tough to get because you have substitutes, you had a long list of those, and it took you forever to move up. And, you know, it was hard to get. We had enough subs. If you want the job, now is the time to get involved and apply, because it's not gonna be like this three or four years from now. It's gonna change, and it's gonna be harder to get the jobs again.
And David's been pushing some information out to, you know, to get that. It makes it easier for people to apply. He's done a good job, like I said.
Yeah, Tammy and David's been working together to get an advertisement out and to make it more accessible, even for our West Virginia Learns site. You could talk about that a little bit, Tammy, if you want. Let's move right on to personnel. What you've been doing with them, I mean, just in the last couple of weeks.
I know that I was very pleased to see that not only is it on our website, I know it's on Facebook, and also it was on WPTV, the advertisement, so through the community loop and everything, so that is going out of the service. I know that information also has gone out to West Virginia Learns. We know of another opportunity to be able to be a substitute, but it requires payment. So a lot of times, people are going through the West Virginia Learns process because it's free prior or before the other process, but we have another avenue as well through the Epic program and just trying to make sure the processing, what we have control over is as fast as possible, whether it be the interviews, whether it be the paperwork. Like I know, last week, interviewed six, or we tested six cooks, six custodians, or six, yeah, six cooks, six custodians to aid the way on background checks. That's what, you know, takes about two or three on background checks. That's a necessity. We have to do that. But other than that, we're just trying to get them processed, and we even interviewed two LPNs the other day. So we're trying to get that process done as fast as possible to get these subs in the building.
Long-term, we're, I've been working with Tammy to put together a team that actually goes out to the job fairs at the local colleges. That's more of a long-term thing. Getting the new displays and things like that. I'm working that out. We're also wanna work with the Harrison County Commission to put on a large job fairs, a job fair at one of our schools, you know, an easily accessible school in, you know, one in the spring and one in the fall. So working with the local community, you know, trying to get everything together with that. We haven't really gotten a hold of the commission yet, but that's one of my goals to do.
I think, you know, I know we used to always have a lot of things at Byrd when you say accessible, because they parking a lot, easy to get into and everything, you know, we used to have a lot of different stuff. Then when on there, people could come in, and so they did, you know, go all the way down.
That's right. And my, you know, I could, I envision this to be a large job fair, where we invite banks, we invite this. Of course, we would have that very first display when you walked in, but because it's on our property. But I was thinking Bridgeport and Byrd would probably be the two prime locations to grab people from different counties and to get, just to get people in our, in the school and to get people talking. And I think it would be great for the community to do also.
You might wanna, we have a good working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce in Harrison County. You might wanna reach out to them. They might be able to push some things out to their membership.
Okay.
And their membership might be interested in doing some stuff for the job fairs. So it might be something that they can, they can assist with as well.
You know, that old picture you used by Uncle Sam, I was just, I want you.
Maybe bring that back, right?
Bring that back.
I think one of the things that's helped is they put the hourly rate on there, and I don't think people realize what the rates are.
You put all that, I want you enlisted.
I think the applications have picked up too, right? People applying. So I just think it's, you know, we're vying for people, just like every other business is vying for people.
But, you know, we need to push the fact that we're stable.
Stable with the retirement and benefits, so that's what we're really working on.
All right, good job.
But you mentioned it's not always gonna be like this. What do you mean by that?
Meaning there's ebbs and flows in the economy. So right now, there's, there's more jobs out there available than workforce, apparently. There's a lot of open jobs in our community. But three years from now, it may change to where no one can find a job. So, and then it's very difficult to get a job. If this was five, six years ago, it's difficult to get a job at the Board of Education because we have such a long list of applicants. You know, we may have a smaller list right now of people wanting to be custodians, cooks, school bus drivers now, but we may not have that two years from now. Right now, we can assure that if you're hired, you pass the background, and you're a good employee, you're gonna go from the sub-list to permanent in a lot shorter time than you would have five years ago. It used to be two, three years to become a full-time bus driver. Now, within, probably within the same year.
Sometimes still.
We're seeing it as soon as six months.
Yeah.
Gary, would I be correct in saying that, just to make note of this, since we've talked about facilities and stuff, it's, it's not only a funding issue, but it's also, you know, when we were talking about the different schools and combining them, it is also a staffing issue at this point.
We could get to the point where we don't have those. Now, it may change, but we could get to that point, and we're there now, you know, because, I mean, let's face it, you know, we, we're running 99 bus routes from 96.
Ninety-one.
And that's a lot of bus routes. You know.
Well, and classrooms and cooking, and when you're talking about, you know, what, how many cafeterias compared to, you know.
Yeah, it all, it all goes into that.
And I just want to make note of that, because I think it's important for the public to know why we as a board have to really sit down and consider some hard decisions. And it's just not money. It's staffing as well.
Right. Just to continue on, and that kind of leads right into it. We're just now finalizing our second month report. So at our next board meeting, I'll have a good, solid number of where we're at with homeschool and what our enrollment's gonna, gonna look like. Looks like we're staying pretty steady with where we ended last year. And I'm not sure, I mean, we're over 10,000 students. We have 1,000 homeschool students right now, but I'll get you those exact numbers. It doesn't look quite.
Looks like we're still over 10?
It does. We were looking at the preliminary numbers today, and they'll submit those. The schools are submitting and we're finalizing that second month report. And that all affects personnel, because, you know, when 85% of your budget is personnel and you're, you are, we've got a lot of schools, and that's a lot of personnel. You're, you've got a lot of duplicated services, because you're trying to provide the same services in all these buildings for those schools. It is something you have to look at when you look at your enrollment numbers, because that's the direct impact of your funding, is your enrollment.
The newspaper, our neighbor Marion County is looking to lose 1.5 million.
Right.
Because of decreasing enrollment in students in home, school, and everything, so, you know.
And unfortunately, the Escher money has allowed this year to be fairly normal in staffing because of, we could allow that for salaries. But that money's not gonna be there, you know, for the end of the future. So we have to really be prudent in what we're looking at.
I just don't think people, like you just made a comment about Marion County and we didn't have Montana, I mean, I don't think anybody really considers how many schools we have in Harrison County, when you compare them to Mon, and when you compare them to Marion County. I mean, Dodgers County, what, they have two, three?
Three.
Three total, total, in the whole county, and we just, I mean.
They've got 1,000.
They've only got 1,000 students.
Thousand students.
That's what she's saying. They've got three. You still have to maintain buildings. We're maintaining 24, 25 buildings, and they're maintaining three.
And high schools. We've got five high schools. Well, really, six county United.
Well, how many, how many?
There's three in Long.
How many?
Three.
Two tripway and St. Louis.
Right.
And how many, like, what was the total?
I think they have, I think it's like 19.
I was gonna say 19, so I'm thinking it's 19.
But they're probably reaching at only stubborn ones, right?
Yeah, they have, yeah. No, 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 they're about 11, maybe 11.5.
No, no, they're close.
I think they're over 10.
Yeah, they're close to us.
They're not, it's not, we kinda compare as far as close to the population, student population.
Really? I always thought they were way above us. I guess that they have the tripway schools, so they only have two. You know, it's just my.
Now, Canola County has 67 buildings and 25,000.
23,000.
Yeah. So that's a massive amount, yeah. The other thing, just I want to say with personnel, I know our schools, every day, I know when, in the evening, I look to see on smartphone, I know Tammy's looking, that's our call-out system, just to see our vacancies. And I'm talking to Jody every day. We are filling those the best we can. And we can look, you may have five or six vacancies out in the building. Some of those services are ancillary, but when you see a regular classroom teacher out, those are the ones we're working to get people in. You may not get, you know, and we are using our title, teachers are filling in and covering classrooms. I know that's not ideal, but we have professionals in the building, and we're, you know, they're stepping up and doing that. And we're also paying for planning periods. People do not have to do that, but they can get paid for it if they're willing. We're gonna address that. We have that in policy, and we're not paying a lot for that. We've just discovered that, so that's been brought to our attention. So we're looking at that and would like to increase that amount for when a teacher's covering a planning, that we can pay them a little bit more for that. But people are really stepping up all over. I know it, it makes you weary, and, but we are watching that, and we're sending folks out. I know from county office, they're going out to cover. If we see a building with a big deficit in staffing in the morning, we're sending out curriculum folks to cover and to help, so, yeah. So we are looking at it. It's not, not that we're ignoring it, but we're just working with the folks that we have. And like I said, now we're getting, seem to get, we got hit today with cooks for some reason. It seems to be, like you said, pockets. There seems to be certain schools that have more than others. And actually, the number of student positives went down last week, but our staff positives went up a little. I mean, we're, we're really, you know, we're not seeing a lot of staff positives, not a lot of quarantines, but there's some illness, some people calling off sick. So we don't always know. But we are watching that every night, and first thing in the morning at 6:30, we start, I think probably sooner than that, looking to see where our big deficits will be for the day. And if we can get somebody else out there, push somebody out there, move somebody around, we're doing that. But we just can't be 100% filled every day until we get, hopefully, hiring these additional folks will help with that. But that's just honestly where we're at right now. We're trying to stay open and, you know, feed the kids and get that regular instruction right now, those regular classroom positions.
But we're just depending on the call-out system. The call-out system rotates through the certified teachers that are going to go to the West Virginia Learns teachers. Then in the morning, they're calling the West Virginia Learns subs, and also some subs that they've talked to recently, calling them on the phone.
And calling.
And asking them, will you come in for position and trying to.
I know Mr. Durico and Ms. Manfitti, every morning come in with a list of, they look to see what schools have openings. And we look to see, is that an itinerant person? Can they get by today without that person? It's not ideal, but we, we have not forgotten. I know they think maybe we're forgetting them, but we're not. We're watching it every day. And if we can get somebody there, we're getting them there. So I just want to say thank you to the schools for, I know they're, they're tired and tired of covering, but that's kind of where we are right now. It looks like we peaked, according to Chad, and it looks like we're heading down in numbers. So let's hope that in the next two weeks, we see a change in positives. So that's all we can hope for. Oh, my goodness, I can't, they really have. And there's things happening out there that we don't even hear about. We'll even call and check on a school and say, how are you doing? Because we see you've got several vacancies, and they'll say, we got it covered. We got it covered. So I can't ask for really anymore, and I know everybody's working hard. Jimmy's every morning calling, you know, about busing. So we're really just watching that all the time to see where we've got coverage. And you're, you've got a large county, that's a lot of positions.
It's not gotten too bad, because they haven't called Hope yet to retire.
Jimmy did tell me the other day that a superintendent somewhere down south got their CDLs, so I think that might have been it.
All right.
Yeah. Other than that, I think Doug has a technical center update.
Uh, yeah.
Forget about him.
They just had their, well, we used to go to OBEA, whether to man, bring people in to check out the school, make sure they check everything. I mean, they drew.
It's a federal. He said it was a federal inspection.
Five, two, four, and they just had their, down here, there was three people that came in and went through everything. There was some things they would not allow them into their personnel files. They bought them with everything they needed, that everybody was certified in a position and all that was in, and so they finally agreed to that. But they, everything went very, very well. There was no findings against the Career Center. They made, there was two little recommendations that was really, very little petty things that, you know, could easily be handled, and they gave them rave reviews down there. In comparison to like James Runsey Career Center, which is over the Eastern Panhandle, they had 14 findings against them, and that puts them in a very difficult situation with their programs over there. They, personnel-wise, they was talking about maybe hiring a technology systems specialist. We discussed it, talked about it. They talked about maybe being shared between two different schools, but gonna do a little more study on it and what have you. So it basically got tabled, you know. It would be a situation where the two schools would pay the, pay for the person, but, you know, like I say, to most everybody, it needed to be studied and tweaked a little bit more before we would even consider yay or nay on it. And there was an update on Barbara B. Mayer. They are still in the process of trying to get John as her guardianship, you know. That's one thing that everybody better consider. Make sure that you have a power of attorney and a medical power of attorney, you know, where they never had done that for each other, and then this unfortunately happened. So now they gotta go get a lawyer, go through the court system, and then once the lawyer, you know, can make him a, her guardianship and everything. Then at that point, her employment will be basically, I guess, terminated, you know. But she's going to stay with the system until this goes through. But they don't know, they, right now, they're trying to get the court hearing for November, where they can get, get him appointed. There's a lot of things that, once he gets appointed, that can help her and help them in their situation out. And.
How is Barbara?
Not, not good. And, and how it's for the whole family, and their, they're going, children. And there was a question, and I don't know if, about, and it alarmed us when they saw that, you know, Harrison County talking about, maybe we take the Career Center just for Harrison County, but that's not possible because of, through the state and the way that the Career Centers were set up and the guidelines that, it was set up for three counties, and it's in the laws and in the guidelines, and so it has to stay in that.
That's odd, because Dodgers County just sold one.
No, they, they're.
They're going separate, but, but if we added 15 programs, and our programs were the ones the kids wanted, I mean, the place, if we weren't sending kids there, then it wouldn't exist, so.
But they can't duplicate.
No, that's what I'm saying. If we do 10 programs, I just don't wanna be sitting on the sideline where we're beholden to programs that we have no say in while Doggeridge is out there adding 15 really good programs and maybe Taylor County does, and we're sitting here relying on the tech center, which we have no control. We're one-third vote.
True, you know. Like I said, you can add other programs.
That's what I'm saying, but if we put a bunch of programs in, but, but here's, you know, that, here's the bad thing, is we can't sit on the sideline, because if, if Doggeridge County, who now has their own facility, goes out and puts in 10 new programs, now the tech center can't put those 10 programs in. So we, so now they've shut us out of being able to offer our students a good technical education because Doggeridge County put it in.
Like HVAC.
Yeah. So if they put it in, we can't offer it in the, in the tech center. That's where it's problematic. And, and even though it's in code, I would, I would say that there's ways, since we're funding it, I mean, what would, what would preclude Doggeridge County from going out and putting in, you know, the hottest technical education there is, and then we can't offer it to our students? That's wrong.
Well, no, right now, Doggeridge County has very cold feet, because they are going to lose $8 million next year because of, from funding.
Well, they don't get, they don't get.
It's just their revenue.
Their revenue's down, yes. They don't get school.
Eight million dollars, and now they are starting to sweat a little bit.
But I, I mean, they can say what they want about, you know, the multi-county, and I understand it's in code, but you can't tell me that it's fair that we're, we're beholden to the multi-county, and we can go start a program, but if Doggeridge County starts it, then that precludes the multi-county from doing it. So let's say there's, you know, let's say they would have jumped on like the Power Sport, which is our big program out there now. If Doggeridge would have put it in, you know, a couple of years ago before we did, we wouldn't even be able to offer it to our students, because they made us to the punch. And that's not right.
No, and the vote's not right. We have, what percentage, 80s?
Probably over 90.
Over 90% of the students in there, and one third of the vote, and it's our facility.
The enrollment, enrollment, it was, right now was 367. But Taylor and Doggeridge County, I can't find where I put it. I wrote it down somewhere. But anyway, they are, they're providing about 80 of the students, approximately, 80 of the students out of the 300. So 260-some are coming out of our county.
So let's say just for, let's say they each have 40, and then we have, what, we have basically 300?
No, we have basically about 280.
280. Close to 300, and they have 40 and 40, and it's our school.
We have the building, yeah.
And, and we have the same vote. And so they are dictating for our 300 students, basically, what we can offer and what, it's tied. If our students aren't to, aren't their best interest.
Right.
How do I put that?
They're offering collegiate repair, auto mechanics, carpentry, cosmetology, medical assisting, drafting technology, electricity, health occupation, computer systems, machine shop, masonry, something robotic, yeah, robotics, okay, power sport, welding, law enforcement.
I thought they got rid of, well, of masonry.
They combined it with carpentry.
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 That's, that's one.
And those are, those are, that's all well and good, but we've been teaching those same subjects for years. So let's say something comes out that, you know, for oil and gas or whatever, and Dogger says, hey, we'll jump on that, then we can't, we can't have it at the tech center.
Well, let's look at something, Aeronautics is a big one, because I know there was, when I was there, they were combining programs.
Well, we can't, that's where we've got one. We've got. We've got aeronautics, so they can't have it there. So that's reverse to them. They can't offer it at the tech center.
Aren't they still not doing that?
What?
He said it was going to be like two years before they started offering the aeronautics. And I, and I questioned that because not only does Pierpon have one, but we have one as well. And I think it was a different level of aeronautics maybe, but they not offering.
They were offering airframe.
The actual flight, yeah.
It was going to be airframe, not the technical center.
But that's, that's where I get the problem is, is that if Doggeridge, let's say they have 10 students and they decide they want for a program, then that means that we can't offer it.
Right now, their big one is plumbing and HVAC is what they're, two thing is. And I did, I've talked to Mr. Torrico about this, working with our high schools and even the middle schools about with CTE and all this programming and try to, to look at the technical center and what they're offering. And we just need to either get more kids there and make that more vibrant for Harrison County. I mean, that's what we were looking at. That's, I believe that's going to be one of his goals.
Well, I can comment that I'm currently trying to get a, I guess, grasp of where we're at with CTE programs in all of our high schools. And also I will put UTC, I will put a five high school first and UTC after that. And then I want to review where we want to go. And that's working with a, a large group of people, obviously educators, principals and so forth. But it's also making some connections in the community and what the community needs. So I've got some long-term goals in my head where I want to go. I'd love to be there today, but it's going to take some time. I do have some things, I think initially, the first thing I can do is start marketing the programs we have. I think that's the key, just let people know, here's some opportunities, if you'd like to take advantage of it. So I'm currently working with others, put some pieces together. And, you know, Mrs. Douglas, I talked, when I really do have, I guess, a better understanding of where we're at and where we're going, I want to report to you and bring you into the loop. Obviously, I'm still getting settled and I'm just connecting some pieces together. I have mentioned the principals, as soon as I get that opportunity, I want to go out and take some hands with the CTE teachers and really get to know them. Because I know we've got some good things going. I, I received the information, I just need to start marketing it and sharing it because we're marketing it to our middle school kids and maybe even to our freshmen and sophomores so that they can start preparing to move into those programs. And right now in this world, there's opportunities to go to two-year technicals, probably get most of that education paid for. If you still want a four-year degree, you can go do that and hopefully you're paying for two years, not a four, versus all four. So the opportunity's there.
The opportunity isn't there because if you put too much thought into it and look at our kids and decide what we really need, you have two other counties that are going to have to agree with you to give it the rub. That's our point.
That's what I'm saying, we're going to have to do our own. But, but if we have more, if we have the programs that the kids want and we have to do them in our school system, those kids aren't going to go to that tech center and it's probably going to collapse on its own weight because the other two counties cannot maintain that, that center without us. So.
And that's what I, that, that's my concern. I mean, is there.
I just like to steer the boat. I mean, and that's the problem.
That's exactly right.
Is when you walk into there, you're outvoted on, on anything because it's two, two and two.
You put in personnel, but Harrison County is responsible.
Yeah, and that's the other issue. If they're hired out there, they're on our dime, so.
Yeah. Um, let me tell you also that what I, why this has always been something in my mind. I look at my generation and like workers and stuff and carpentry and electricians. Well, now, most of them are retiring and everything. And there is nobody coming up. There are not any young businesses, no carpenters or anything like that. Yet we have the tech center. I, in my mind, believe it has to do with shop being taken out of high schools and things such as that. Because I remember as a kid going and looking in the windows of RW on the ground floor and seeing where they are making birdhouses and things like that. That's probably one of the reasons why I always built and got into contracting, basically, is because I thought that was so dead on interesting, watching them build, you know? But it was, I was young. And when you have young kids look at things like that, that's how it starts going is within our school systems.
Well, I think what you're referencing is what I was referencing this day and age. We're going to have to market our programs and basically have to educate the students and their parents what opportunities are out there. And I think that's what you're alluding to, you saw that. And therefore, students were interested in pursuing that. And once again, they may just not, I know in this day and age with the internet, sometimes you wonder why kids don't see things. And they're just not looking the right things. And we have to show them, and like I said, I use the word market to them. And once again, our social media will be a source of marketing and so.
Thank you, you said it right. That's wonderful, but we should be steering the ship. Or that you said that perfectly.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's, I'm done.
All right, that moves us down to approval of consent items. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. New business, Purple Star designation, award, resolution. Do you want to come and speak to this before the resolution, then I'll read the resolution?
Okay. Sounds great.
I am here on behalf of the BHS administration. I am Renee Matthews, one of the assistant principals. I am also here as a military spouse and a mother of two military kids. The West Virginia Department of Education has opened up applications for a Purple Star Award process. The Purple Star Award is designed to recognize schools that create a military-friendly environment and make a special commitment to supporting the resilience of military-connected children. Bridgewater High School will be completing the application process that is due at the beginning of this next month. If BHS is awarded the Purple Star designation, it will last for three years. Regardless of being chosen for the award, BHS will remain vigilant in our efforts to support military families. This will include a military display at our school entry, celebrating those that serve or are serving. The display will include pictures of staff's loved ones that have served or currently serve in the military. We also have several staff members that have served and will be honored, to include one, Mr. Pollak that's here this evening. He is, helps with our ROTC program unpaid after school. We have for years and will continue to invite the military into our school to talk with our students about military options. I would like for a moment to talk about my perspective as a military wife and mom to two military children. My family has been through a couple of deployments with my husband going overseas and currently my husband is attending Army War College until next summer. There are three phases of deployment that school personnel must understand for military kids regardless of deployment location. Each stage is characterized by a timeframe and emotional challenges that are prominent. When a school is aware that a family is going to have an active military member, they should reach out and periodically make sure that the family does not need anything. A quick phone call or email means a lot to a mom of military kids. My kids are very strong and resilient, but they must know that they are supported at school when their dad is away. In the purple folders I have provided you, there are several documents. The first being the school webpage that I received help on. So the county can also do something similar as they, if they pass the resolution. These are resources that I have personally used as a wife and as a mother. So I know that these are great resources for our military families in Harrison County. The next document is the common ground, and that is an explanation of the West Virginia Department of Ed Purple Star Program and the different opportunities that they have. And within there, there's a speaker series and it's all the school has to do it, do is go in and make a request to have a speaker and tell them the topic that you want and the date that you're looking at, and they will team up somebody with you for free. So it's a really great opportunity, very good topics that they can come and talk on. The third is the West Virginia Department of Ed Resolution. That is where they have agreed as a state to support military families. And it originally started in Ohio, the Purple Star Program. They were the first state that did this. It's now, as of right now, in 12 states in the nation. There is not a class of Purple Star Awards currently in West Virginia. This is the open enrollment for it. So we're hoping that we, as Bridgewater High School, would be one of the first in the group. We definitely love being first at everything. Explanation, the Purple Star Program from the original organization in Ohio is also enclosed. That's the last document there. As a military wife, mother of military kids, and a school employee, I am asking the board to show support for our military families in our community by passing a resolution stating that they will support members of the armed forces and their families. If there is any portion of the resolution that you have a question on, please just ask me.
And with that, we do have a resolution here, which I'll read. Whereas our country owes daily freedoms and safety to members of the armed forces and their family members and loved ones who share their service and sacrifice. And whereas we celebrate the exceptional service, strength, and character of military-connected students and families in Harrison County Schools. Whereas we acknowledge that military families face unique challenges due to deployments throughout our state, country, and the world, service in combat zones, reintegration and frequent relocations based on duty assignments. And whereas the school board of Harrison County Schools affirms their commitment to providing resources and programs to military, to support military-connected students academically, socially, and emotionally. And whereas we acknowledge the important role military organizations can embrace in cooperating with school districts to provide career exploration opportunities and supporting the success of all students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board of Harrison County Schools officially supports all military children and families, plan to work with schools across the district to accomplish the following. Provide military families with information about where to find supportive programs and resources on the county school district's website. Provide those involved with school administration and enrollment with information about Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission and its provisions which support successful educational transition for military families who are relocating to West Virginia. Motivate school administrators to identify military children and provide them with support which focus on building encouragement and resiliency during times when a family member is being deployed. Encourage schools to participate in military-friendly activities which lead to application, which led to application for a Purple Star Award designation from the West Virginia Department of Education. Provide students with Military Career Exploration Day within each high school where local military representatives may hold voluntary seminars and display information about their career opportunities. Establish a voluntary student exit process which includes opportunities for military personnel to provide guidance about the benefits of graduating from high school to any students considering dropping out of school. Work with local military partners to identify personnel in the region who may specialize in substance abuse prevention and encourage them to participate in school activities designed to combat, combat drug use. And Harrison County school officials will meet annually with military partners to discuss youth leadership programs, resources for college, and career readiness, including entrance exam preparation and protocols for school interactions between students and military personnel throughout the district. Be it further resolved that the Harrison County Board of Education encourages all school staff and community members to initiate support and participate in appreciation activities designed to recognize the exceptional role and unique sacrifices our military-connected youth and their families make in our nation's best interest. And be it further resolved that the copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes approved by the Harrison County Board of Education, Clarksville, West Virginia, this fifth day of October 2021. Signed by all the board members.
Thank you very much.
So I will give this to you.
I didn't sound like Doc.
One thing is, I think that a lot of times in schools, when there's, you know, children in school, their fathers are in the service and before we know, a lot of times, I don't think, sometimes schools are aware of it. So I think that, you know, that's, that has to be a focal point is that we know when there's, you know, there are children of military parents and, you know, father being deployed, so that, you know, extra attention can be, you know, given to that child.
Speaking of that, yes, actually on the Wevis form, at the very bottom, there's a military-connected box that is filled out and it is put into Wevis and Mary Ann Martin prints us a military.
Okay, that was after my time.
Yeah, it's there now. I know, it wasn't there before. But I know for us, when we deal with behavioral issues, it's actually one of the things that we look at. And if we have an attendance problem, it's one of the things that we can look at because you have to do it differently. It must be dealt with differently.
All right, guys. Three, two, one. One, two, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks beautiful.
I would like to suggest on your website, military scholarships, specifically military students, all those scholarships out there. I'm familiar with them, you've got my sister, but, I mean, there's so many and all these are resources, so.
We will definitely add that. That's no problem. I know people will add it in two thousand, probably.
Yeah, the office scholarships.
I know we put them in our newsletter from our counselor. So I know that she put them all in there because I forward all of them because I get a lot as a spouse. So, yes, I will definitely, will make sure I add it. Okay, thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move down to item B of new business.
Doing.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, we need better vote on that first. Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
So moved and seconded by Ms. Messenger. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition, motion carries. Thank you. Abastate travel study request?
Make a motion, Jeffrey.
I'm going to recede myself because I have a Jewish year ago on that.
Okay, noted refusal of Mr. Dodgery. Is there a motion? Did someone make a motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, is there, is there a second with the refusal of?
But that was for discussion.
Yes, discussion.
My, my only concern at all is the time that, you know, that we're in now with COVID all. I mean, when is this taking place? I mean, I don't, I didn't see.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Of this month?
Yeah.
To the first.
My only concern was with.
Oh, no, just a day, just one day.
The situation.
It's outside. I mean, most of it's outside.
Okay. All right.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I would like, you know, this, if you're pre-COVID, would have been an issue.
Yeah.
And wording in this team building doesn't cut it.
Right.
If you look at it, okay? But I have to tell you, now that we're in COVID, I really, really like seeing our kids somewhat back to normal.
Yeah.
Safely, of course, and enjoying activities. But I just wanted to state because we went a long time discussing these issues and, you know, all the different field trips we were getting, and this would not break that criteria.
And my concerns are on a bus.
Right.
And all that, I mean, that's.
I understand both concerns and, and this goes back to my.
I think trips are fun. I think it's great, but I just.
Yeah, go back to when it's, when we're in a normal time, I'll go back to reiterate what I've said for the last 10 years is, is sometimes I don't understand why we send busloads of kids to Kennywood when we're this close to Washington DC and we have kids that have never been there.
Exactly.
That's more of an educational trip and, and it seems like we call it team building or whatever and we go to Pittsburgh and we spend 10 minutes at the Carnegie Center and then eight hours at Kennywood. And, you know, we could spend some time on the bus. You go overnight, you're in DC all day and then back on the bus. We, we did it for years and now I've not seen one travel request since I've been on this board to go to Washington DC.
No.
You know, Mr. Polling's not living anymore and they all stopped. You know, we don't, we don't.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, pre-COVID, I would have had an objection to this and I just don't want because I am going to vote for this.
Right, and that's.
Or it to get, get rid of our, our thoughts on field trips of educational and all that. I mean, I think this is fine just because I'm happy to see the kids getting out and doing things.
Right.
That are quote unquote more normal.
Once COVID's done, I'm, I'm back with you.
But this, this would not qualify.
Exactly.
Because I wanted to make sure that is on the record, in my opinion.
Also, because we, we, we went through this one tonight, doesn't mean that the next one that comes before.
That's what I'm saying.
Every, everyone will be, have to be weighed out, you know?
Exactly. And that is exactly what I'm saying, and they're being. And voting yes on this today, I didn't want to create a new path.
Right.
That I don't agree with.
Right, and like I said, sometimes I've noticed over the years, it's a educational trip is five percent stop at something educational and ninety-five percent Kennywood. And I just have issues with that, when we have so much of our nation's history within driving distance of where we're at. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Preschool budgets and contracts for 2021-2022 school year.
I make a motion to approve the preschool budgets and contracts for 2021 and 2022, through 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the naming of the roadway at Robert Seabird High School. And if you remember at the last meeting, Mr. Gibson was here to ask the permission to rename the road right in front of the, or to the football stadium from the tennis courts.
Yeah, the tennis courts up to the lane.
As Dougie Layfield Lane. And we were in agreement at that time, and I think there's a ceremony on Friday. So is there a motion?
Somebody...
Moved by Mr. Hogan and seconded by Mr. Goddery. Any further discussion?
Very well deserved.
Only thing I ask, is there, how many, how many people are going? I mean, I know they, I gotta catch that.
I'm going to go.
You're going, you're going, I'm going.
That's the Lincoln RCB game.
Yeah, I'll be there. It's their homecoming. I know, it's their senior night.
It's RCB's homecoming.
It's RCB's homecoming.
Yeah, RCB's homecoming.
I didn't get an invitation.
Should have been an email.
All board members.
Oh, I probably sent on a text message.
There was an email.
I got one today I want to text.
You should have an email.
Mr. Olivario is going.
Well, I mean, I just think, because they want us to let them know who all is coming.
Six or seven seniors.
Yeah.
It's called a text.
Yeah, we're going to get, we're going to do a picture or something down by the tennis court right now. Bailiff, and then we're going to do another one here on the field.
Right.
You know, prior to the game.
Yeah.
Like I say, I'm going to be there for the first, but then I have another appointment.
Yeah, I'll be there, so. And, and Mr. Olivario, I appreciate, we had a casual discussion, and I brought up something, and it's my understanding you're going to do that is since we'll have a crowd at that game, you're going to have a tent there to do the...
We'll do it again, yes.
Identif-, did you do it once already?
Yeah, we did it at a good sport game.
He's done the identifications for the seniors to get in there. I just casually mentioned it, and I'm used to, I hate to say it, from years of mentioning things, and everyone thinks it's a good idea, and you sit here a year later, and no one ever did it, so.
It was low received.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. I mean, it's nice to be able to bring up something casually, and it's taken care of, and I don't...
He wanted to go to that game, because there was food trucks.
Right, so, but I do appreciate that. It's, it's, I think it's a good idea. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. No old business policy updates. Policy 1101, school attendance areas, and that is updated. So what was updated? Is it in bold that was updated? Because usually it was in red. Was, was...
These policies were on the last agenda with the, whatever the recommendations were, or comments.
These are the ones we put out for thirty days.
Yeah, so she's put them back on here for approval. Yeah.
I make a motion to approve policy 1101, school attendance areas updated.
That's the final.
For thirty day comment, correct?
No.
No, this is, we don't...
These are four that were out for thirty days. She had them on the last agenda with comments.
And we didn't get any comments, correct?
No, there was a handful. You can...
Right, there were, there were two comments.
Okay.
There was two comments, or one comment that was thankful towards the reduction of overcrowding within schools and extracurricular activities. Two comments, questions, legal guardianship, transportation, and why signatures are required from those schools.
Who are they, yeah, school attendants?
Right, yeah.
For those comments, are they on yet?
Look under public. Look under public.
They're not, they're not there.
No, I'm sorry, that was, that was under forty-three or two. That was, um, this one, it says, we've got ten responses total. Five comments were in support of the yearly application. Two questions, question the need for yearly approval of transfers. And two suggest not transporting transfer students. And one comment, question the privacy of parents.
Okay, I see a comment.
That's a comment.
Comments were in support of the application. Two question the need for yearly approval. So that was like, fine.
I mean, I think that we...
We don't transfer, we don't transport transfer students.
We don't transport around there.
Okay.
But as far as the yearly, I don't think we want to give that a flexibility. We're doing, have to do yearly.
And what about the privacy of parents? What would be...
They were questioning whether a school should know if a student was outside of their area or not.
Absolutely.
Well, I know, but that was just their questioning whether the school should have that information or not. They thought that the school should have that.
Because it was...
They shouldn't be lucky with their address, that sort of...
Aunt's and uncle's address, and say they live there. But if they have to, if they have to bring in the electric bill, gas bill, and all that there, then they know they're caught, you know? So, of being approved.
I can't remember. Did we have a motion on this?
Yes.
Yeah, she did.
Okay, that was, we were at discussion. Okay, so any, any further discussion?
You have to have a second.
We had a second, yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Policy forty-one oh three, manual for expected behavior of safe and supportive schools. I make a motion to approve. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yep, one thing. It says on the executive summary that Dr. Mark A. Manchin, Superintendent of Harrison County Schools...
Who's Dr. Mark A. Manchin?
Who's that one? Is that on the...
Mark, he used to work here.
That was on the entire manual. This was just the section. So I mean, I think we want to totally review the entire manual. The manual's like, as I teach around, this was just a section within that manual. We can definitely...
Because it was created while he was here.
Created while he was here, the entire manual. This was the policy within that manual, that's why...
I would just take the superintendent's name.
You can take that page out, because that would need board action for that. Just to clean up the manual.
That way it's updated, because it's updated in October of 2021. Yeah, right. I'd just take the superintendent out.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Assignment, that's policy forty-three oh two, assignment to schools.
I make a motion to approve policy forty-three oh two, assignment to school.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Policy fifty-seven oh one, virtual schools. Moved that we accepted policy for virtual schools, fifty-seven oh one.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel matters. And we, oh, hold on, we have a personnel agenda adjustment. Pull professional personnel recommendation, extended day employment. Pull Michael Spatafor. And extracurricular recommendations, employment, pull Andrew Boke. And that's the two agenda adjustments with that. Yes?
Mr. President, I don't have the legal terminology from me, but I'd like to go to executive session for a moment today.
On personnel matters?
Yes.
Okay, so I will, since you are on the phone, Mr. Goddery moves pursuant to six-nine-eight-four subsection two of the West Virginia Code that the board go into executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which, if discussed in public, might affect adversely the reputation of any person. Is that how you would have said it? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are in executive session.
There's been a motion to second to return from executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Brings us down to personnel matters.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the personnel matters as presented by the superintendent with the agenda adjustment for Michael Spatafor and Audrey Bochy and pulling Michael Cabo until further notice.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second now.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Brings us down. No legal and disciplinary matters. Board member comments. Mr. Daughtry?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Messenger?
You go ahead.
Mr. Hoag?
I had something but it left me, so I can't think. No, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Devonough.
No, sir, I'm clear.
And I'm good as well. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There's no motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Children of peace, go in peace.